All right.
Can I scare you with my screen? I mean, share my screen?
Well, let's wait till we get started. Good evening. Welcome to the Village of Amerenek Board of Trustees work session for Jan- January, I'm sorry. February 23rd, this is a budget work session. I just want to talk about procedurally. What usually has gone on in the past, and I think it's a good practice, is to allow the department heads to present to the village first, especially to the village board. Department heads usually spend, you know, weeks preparing for what their asks are and for what their mission is. And so we're going to allow them to give their presentation. Then the board will ask questions, then after the board will ask questions, we'll allow the budget committee to ask questions. So this way there'll be, you know, everybody will know the order of things. So Jerry, you're presenting tonight for HR2 because Danielle is going to be out.
Yes.
Okay. You want to show the village manager's office first?
Sure.
Can you open the meeting?
Oh, I'm sorry, my bad. I need a motion to open the meeting.
So moved.
Ball in favor. Aye.
Aye.
Jerry, the show is all yours.
Okay, thank you. So. One question before you start. What page am I on? On page 10 of 120 or 170, is that the page? What pages are we going to look at today?
I have a PowerPoint presentation, Victor.
Okay.
We can be, we can look at pages after that, but I'm not sure. I believe Augie sent out earlier just the managers' department and HR department separately, but.
I'm sorry to ask, but it's key because, you know, the ads, I've just, I went through the one that I picked up in the village. So I want to know if I'm working from there. So is, what I got in hard copies is the same thing that you circulated, Augie?
It should be the same, yes.
Okay.
There were four adjustments, I believe, made today. So minor adjustments made today.
All right.
There was an email that went out today at three o'clock that had, you know, each individual department. So you wouldn't have to go through.
Right, but I had, no, I worked from the original, right?
I know.
But anyway, we can, we can track it down. All right. I just wanted to.
All right.
Be on the same page.
Go ahead, Jerry.
Thank you.
We'll track it, we'll track it down and get you to where you need to be in that document. No problem.
Okay, Jerry.
Okay. So thank you for allowing us to present. What I wanted to do was share a little bit with the board as well as the budget committee and the public, some of the responsibilities we have. And the primary responsibility, of course, is to support the Board of Trustees and execute their directives. We are very involved for the past year in emergency management. We have the longest running disaster probably in my history or in many of your histories. With a pandemic that's almost a year long. We've also had a tropical storm, of course, in between and during this pandemic, as well as several significant snowstorms. And so this office manages the emergency management coordination through all departments and functions as the lead in anything regarding emergency management. This office, this office also manages the old departments and is responsible for the positive interaction of, of the residents between the village and the residents and the business owners in this village. We're responsible for budget oversight and we're responsible for approving all of the invoices and following procurement policy, including keeping on the department heads to make sure that they continue to follow the purchase order process that we, we have successfully transferred over in large part in every department. I am the appointing authority. I work very closely with the HR department. But Mr. Sonoff and Courtney Wong and Karen Johnson work very closely with the HR department, which I will explain a little bit later. We lead contract negotiations. We're currently in PBA contract negotiations. And last year was our first full year of a new CSEA contract. We have three years left after June 1st. There are three years left in the CSEA contract. This office now manages the engineering department and the engineering office to make sure we're coordinated with all departments. We also facilitate large projects and we work closely with all of the consultants. We have an engineering consultant. We have a grant administrative consultant, planning consultant, as well as all of the FEMA responsibilities that we have since we are now involved in the reimbursement of all of our costs associated with the two disasters. One that we're currently in and the one from early August of, of last year. I wanted to connect the public and the people viewing this with the staff that we have. And I hope it shows, but I am extremely proud of the staff that we have here and that we've been able to put together. First is Assistant Village Manager Dan Sonoff, who has a Masters of Public Administration from Brockport. Dan has 20 years experience in public sector. And he was raised right here in Westchester County. Dan's knowledge of New York state laws and contacts is extensive and extremely helpful for me. His specialties are grant and large project management, as well as using big words whenever he can. And so it's very important to have some, a wordsmith like Mr. Sonoff on the staff. What I did, and I wanted to do this for the Board of Trustees knowledge, is I asked the staff to give me one quote, a quick line, about what it's like to work in the manager's office. And Mr. Sonoff said that working in the manager's office has given, given him an opportunity to be surrounded by dedicated staff, many of whom grew up in the larger Amerenek community and have chosen a career in public service and display their excellence and commitment to serve this community on a daily basis. And I want to thank you, Dan, for all your hard work. The manager's secretary is Ms. Courtney Wong. She has a BA in sociology from Keene State College. Courtney was born and raised in Amerenek. And if, I'm sure residents will attest that she provides excellent customer service to the residents, the residents of the village, as well as the business owners. She's responsible for all of the village manager issued permits. And she handles document management for this office. She's been here in the village, she's going on six years now. And so she said about the manager's office is that working in the manager's office has been a great experience with great management. Every day I learn something new and I love being able to help the residents of the village I grew up in. So you can see there's a connection now, which we've made between the staff of the manager's office, as well as, and the residents of this village, who I believe is very important. Karen Johnson, Karen was originally hired for the building department. I moved her over to the, to the manager's office. She's an office assistant. Karen was born and raised in Amerenek. She provides assistant to HR and payroll department and handles all of our insurance claims. Karen has this knack for turning over every boulder that she possibly can. And so far, she's uncovered $120,000 in insurance overpayments, which will be reimbursable back to the village of Amerenek, and she continues to do that. But what we've done with Karen and with Jonathan in Augie's office is that we're creating we're creating some kind of a process now where we can make sure that, first of all, we don't overpay the insurance payments, the, the payments typically to attorneys and others, and that we have a process going forward so that we can pass that on to other individuals. Karen said, "I take great pride in working where I live. I care about the many elements and issues flowing through the village manager's office." And I believe the team is a force of positive and productive movement, movement forward. And I want to thank Karen and Courtney for their hard work. Robert Ingenito, as many of you know, is our public information officer. Robert has a bachelor's in anthropology and music from Skidmore. He grew up in Long Island. I say I grew up on Long Island, but Robert says he grew up in Long Island and moves to, and moved to Amerenek with his family just a couple of years ago. He assists us in various, various communication projects. He creates the newsletter, the e-newsletter. He manages and updates the village website and Facebook page. And he was very instrumental in the 2020 census, developing and producing a public service announcement and really spearheading that for us. Robert said, "I feel very fortunate to work with some wonderful individuals in the manager's office and throughout all of the village departments who are dedicated to the ideals of public service and local government. Whenever things get tough, I am grateful for their wisdom and good spirits." Last in my staff, on my staff, is a part-time office assistant. His name is Neri Rubinalis. He's attending Mercy College. He majors in legal studies. Neri is from Amerenek. He's lived in Amerenek for 20 years. He is the first member of his family to receive a high school diploma and attend college. After obtaining a degree in legal studies, Neri plans to attend law school. His parents are both from a small village in Guatemala. Neri believes that the US legal system is meant to protect every individual's constitutional rights, and he wants to take part in advocating and protecting people. Neri said, "I enjoy working in the manager's office because everyone is treated like a family and everyone in the office has a great amount of respect for each other." And so what I wanted to do, Mayor, was to introduce and reintroduce the staff here in the manager's office since we've been disconnected for so long and working and watching our computer screens as we talk to each other. I think it was important to show the makeup and composition of this excellent staff that we have here. And I feel very fortunate to be able to lead them. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Sonoff. Mr. Sonoff will explain a little bit about our departmental and non-departmental budget lines that we have, that we manage. So Dan, just let me know when you want me to advance the, advance the slide.
Sure, I can advance it right now.
You want me to stop, to stop share?
Yeah, I can probably share because I should have the same.
Yeah, you do.
Yeah, but do you want to use this version or the, just the one that deals solely with the manager's office?
That one there, the one, the final one, the one with 39 hours.
Okay. Give me one moment then.
Yep, that's it.
Okay.
I think it's 10, slide 10 maybe.
Yep. So does everyone see the full screen?
Yep.
So just. The first budget is the manager's office budget, which is A1230. Augie sent several versions, we've sent several versions out. In terms of the manager's office budget, it's an overall 1.8% decrease in spending proposed from the adopted budget last year to what we currently propose. The, in the personnel services, there's an increase. It's largely attributable to salary increases for a CSEA employee, which is Ms. Johnson. And also that we've, there was a readjustment of Jared, Jerry's salary during the last fiscal year. There's a year-to-year decrease in contractual services of $29,000. The majority of that is from a proposed $25,000 reduction in surveys and pre-engineering services. I didn't get into the absolute detail that you have with you, but are there any particular questions on, hey, the 100, 200 to 400 accounts from the board?
Delighted to see the decrease, but I'm not sure what surveys and engineering services are being decreased versus what will be increased in managing the engineering department.
Dan, the engineering department has its own, has its own budget regarding engineering contractual services.
Yeah.
That's why I was.
Okay, so it, so is part of the 25,000 been moved over there? Is that part of it?
No, no, just because I manage the engineering contractual services.
Okay, then there's A1621, which is the administrative offices. There's a 2.41% increase, basically $3,000, which is a projected increase in the common charges we pay for our units at the Regatta condominium.
We currently pay $27,000 in common charges to the Regatta condominium. We're looking at a 10, 11% increase in that right now.
Trustee to four, you have a question?
Can you go back one?
Sure.
You, because I see contractual, you have 179, but I have here 204.
Yeah, that, there was updates sent out by Augie this afternoon. And that's contained in the, in what was sent out this afternoon. Originally, it was about two.
Those, because that's, you know, it's in the last two hours, I have not had a chance to.
Yeah, essentially, the, the biggest change, I believe in what you have, trustee to four, it shows 233, 475 as the bottom line number for contractual services in both the adopted and proposed budget. Is that correct?
Yes, I'm looking at the, at the line contractual, which is, yeah, 1230, yeah. 0421, which is the same code for everything, right?
Yeah, but the, the bottom line number based on a reduction that we're asking, we're looking to implement the overall. It's a $29,000 reduction from what's adopted, what's now being proposed. 25,000 of that is a reduction in the surveys and pre-engineering.
Okay, the one that was 65.
Yeah. So what I can, what I can suggest is I have the document with every line. So I can put it up and show you, Victor, the reductions that we did earlier this, earlier today. I'll show you that after the presentation.
Okay, that's good.
Okay, it would be easy to see.
Are there any questions on the increase in the Regatta condominium charges? Or now I'll just move to the next slide.
What's, what's the total we pay on the condominium charges for the year?
27,400 and change.
Okay, that's, that's everything.
Yeah.
Yep. Next, we have our unallocated insurance budget. And, you know, it looks like we're forecasting several increases across our various policies. We are forecasting an approximate $70,000 increase in our general liability insurance, increase in our primary umbrella, increase in the excess umbrella, and increase in the law enforcement. As, as the board probably knows, we, we do bid this out on annual basis through our broker, Foe and Sons. I think many of you have had the opportunity to meet RJ and Pastado, who's our broker. He's very aggressive in negotiating our insurances. So hopefully, you know, we can have some flexibility here. But currently, we are looking at that 18% increase overall in the insurance budget. Any, any questions? The workers' comp compensation budget.
I'm sorry, Dan, I'm sorry to interrupt. I was muted. I was talking to no one. On the insurance increase, because it looks pretty large. Is this something that other municipalities are seeing? Do we know? Or if, is this particular to the village of Amerenek? Do we have any sense of that?
I'll follow up. I mean, it could be, you know, I think with our current environments, people are, this may be more of a reactive position from the insurance companies. But I'll, I'll follow up and with our insurance worker and get some answers for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, finally, we have our, next we have our workers' compensation budget. We're forecasting an increase right now for the boards. If the board doesn't recall, last year, we signed a two-year agreement for our workers' compensation. The second year of the contract, the premium will be based on experience rating from the current year. We don't have that full number yet. But your last year, our workers' comp premium was 979,000. You know, based on our experience rating, our amount could be anywhere between 979 and 1,115,336. I believe if, for us to be at that 1,115,336 number, we would have to have a loss ratio of 50% or greater. There was a spreadsheet. I think we may have shared it with the board last year. I can share it with, again, with the board, following up after this meeting to demonstrate what our exposure could be. But because we don't know what it is at this point, we have forecasted the largest number because it is the maximum exposure we could face.
Dan, can I ask you a question about that? Have our workers' comp claims gone up in recent history?
Yes.
Yeah, we are meeting with, we will be having a review in the next couple of weeks and maybe we'll have an idea where we stand.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Those, I think over in every individual line from this page, I only went over the major increases. There's an increase in 3510, which is control of animals, but that's just a $7, $700 increase for our contract with the New Rochelle-Gamain Society. So it's a paltry sum comparatively speaking to the overall budget.
Didn't we, didn't we eliminate an outside consultant for the mosquitoes for this coming year?
The mosquitoes are a separate budget. That's in the public works office. I believe that's, it's in the 4,000s here. I can't remember the, was it 4310 or something like that? But yeah, we did, that'll be part of public works presentation.
The, Dan, if you stop sharing screen, I can pull up the, the detailed budget.
One comment on, on the, on the screen that was on, don't put it, don't put it. That, that's really, really helpful. And if you could give a head, heads up the day before, at least the day before the next budget, the, the accounts and the pages, then, then we really have a, you know, at least a kind of a review. And we'll be ready for, for questions.
Oh, so I.
Sometimes, for example, some of those, you know, there's, there's a lot of accounts that are under, under manager. But for example, I had, I had not reviewed them again for this meeting. So, so then it's difficult to guess, raise, raise questions. But so for example, that, that, that summary chart was really helpful, really great. And of course, now we can see it, but if we can get something ahead, it could be a simple email. Pages such and such, or accounts such and such, then, then, because I know some, some departments are complicated. Have five or six. I think Augie knows what I'm talking about, right?
Yeah, we'll, we'll try to get those out the day before or the day of. So you actually have the detailed budget sheets.
Right, so we know the pages. So exactly, we know what pages we're going to be looking at. Of course, if you have a presentation, it's helpful and it's, we'll get to review this one. So thank you. That was really good.
I'm fairly certain that all of the insurance, the pension, the medical, optical, life insurance, workman's comp, I believe I composed an email with the page numbers and that. So what we'll do is because we have so much going on here, this was difficult for me to put together ahead of time. We worked on it today. But what I'll do is I will amend this PowerPoint presentation, send it to the board. But I'll add those pages that you're talking about, Victor, to that page, that final page that Victor showed, I mean, that Dan showed. Yeah, that's it.
I actually have it here, so that's why it's so helpful. So you don't need to resend it. Because for your department, it's okay. I'm, I'm curious about other departments.
Okay, okay. As a moving photo, okay, great. Let me put the detailed worksheet up. Let me get to it first. 1230, Jerry? Yeah, I got it on the screen already. Am I on the right one? Yep, 1230. So I'll go up one page. This is the manager's budget, 1230 salaries. This is where on the right-hand side, under Group One Personnel Services, this is where Dan was demonstrating the 3.24% increase. Those are increases in salaries and contractual obligations. The next page is where we have our contractual expenses. So it's a department of 23, 21, 1230, and group number four. So we reduced our conferences and training by $2,000. We reduced fuel, oil, and lubricants by 50%, down to 1,500. We reduced various office supplies from 1,500 to 1,000. And that was where the surveys and on contract services, surveys and pre-bid engineering, we reduced that from 55,000 to 30,000. And I can tell you why, to date, we have spent in that line. Pull it up there as quickly as I can. 83,000 in that line. We have 73,000 left. And that's in 1230, 0421. So I was able to reduce it by 30,000, projecting what we would potentially spend this year, which is like very similar to what we would spend next year. So that's a reduction in 12.23%.
And what are we, nine, one cent to the fiscal year now?
Yeah, we're, we're nine months. We can give you, we can give you stuff to early February, but you know.
I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out what's left in the year. Okay, three quarters are to wait for.
March, April, May. That's what we have left. Okay, so that, that brings our contract services down. And with a reduction of 12.42%, so contract services goes from 233,475 down to 204,475. Overall, it's a reduction in 1.8% in the entire budget. Is there any questions? If not, I can go into HR's budget, which is.
CRS consultant is every year? We have to do that, Dan?
Yep, yeah. It's every year because of, because of who we are, because of where we are.
Well, yeah.
Gotta do it.
It's what it is. You know what? I want to give the budget members an opportunity to ask a couple of questions about this department before we move on to the next department if they want. Does anybody from the budget committee want to ask a question? Raise your hand. Okay, I don't see anything. Maybe they'll save it to the end. Jerry, go on to.
Sure thing. Just give me a minute. Let me switch over to HR's. HR's budget is A fourteen-thirty. Now we have the HR manager. We have a senior account clerk. Salary increases there are point eighty-five percent. Danielle was able to shave miscellaneous equipment by fifty percent to five hundred dollars. He was also able to shave down printing and and stationary to seven hundred and fifty dollars. And she had a reduction in miscellaneous training of seven hundred and fifty dollars. We eliminated the mileage reimbursement. And we reduced miscellaneous supplies by fifty percent to seven hundred and fifty dollars. The reason we eliminated the mileage reimbursement is if there was ever a a meeting or something, you know, out of the village or or long distance, I offer my vehicle to the employees to be able to use for the day to travel to and from the meeting. Mr. Sonoff also has a vehicle and has offered his vehicle as well. So that's a reduction of three-point-two percent for the HR department. HR departments are very small, very busy, high-functioning department, manages a lot of things. And in fact, if you have employee, go ahead.
I know this is going in the wrong direction, but I just want to ask, would it be prudent to include a budget in the HR department for training and for stuff like that?
So the reason that we have a little bit of money in training, but our insurance company, for instance, our insurance broker for instance, provides all of the training that we have for for both New York State required and several optional training sessions for free.
Okay.
Insurance costs. But if there's an extraordinary training, then we still have a little bit of money to be able to do it. And of course, the manager's office has, you know, has a little bit of more money than the HR department. So we would kick in and assist if it was, let's say, several thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Is that it for HR?
That's it for HR.
Board?
Well, in general, I'll just thank the Village Manager's Office and the HR Office for cutting where possible and not submitting a budget with, you know, a wish list in these times. It's very appreciated.
Yeah, we have one wish, Kelly. We want this. We want this pandemic to go away. Other than that, we're good.
I'm with you on that one. You know, if we could, if we, if we could go into real debt to get rid of the pandemic, I'd be all for it.
Jerry, I do have a question that that's not necessarily for this budget, but it the salary increase was six percent, something like that. Was that? I don't have it in front of me back. This is this in the budget. It was, I'm sorry, point.
Point eight-five?
Yeah.
See, five, it's it's
It's it's what accounts for the increase is what I guess I'm getting to.
In this department, it's CSEA contractual. The Senior Account Clerk Clerk is a union member, CSEA union member. So their increases are contractual and fixed by contract.
Okay, well, that that's what it that's true throughout the entire budget is what you're telling me.
It's true throughout the entire budget for the CSEA employees. Correct. Yes.
Okay, and what about non-CSEA employees?
No, no budget, no increases are reflected in that unless there's a contract. So in my case, there's a contract, but in other cases, there's no contract. So that would be set by the Board of Trustees at a later date.
That's we usually have a meeting near the end to decide that. Okay, and that point oh-eight-five is not the increase the CSEA is given. That's the increase for the whole department because it takes into account that Danielle is not getting an increase. So it's it's kind of artificially low number. Like Jerry's department, most of most of the employees are non-represented.
Right. So I can I can tell you that the CSEA contract in in twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two reflects or has a two percent increase for employees on their current salary plus a payment of eight hundred and fifty dollars. Two percent plus eight fifty.
Plus some employees moving up in longevity pay.
Typically, those are Public Works Parks types of employees, correct?
But this employee gets a two.
Yeah.
Okay, is twenty-four hundred the max longevity play?
I believe it is. I'm not sure. I'm thinking twenty-eight hundred is, but I can't exactly put my pinpoint where where that is. I think it's twenty-four hundred. You know, Mr. Fury is a longtime employee of the village.
Right, right. Okay. Anybody on the board have any more questions about the HR department?
No, but I have a question about Jerry's wish. Jerry's wish. It shows up, it it we we open up two two accounts for the pandemic, forty-seven, forty-five and forty-seven, forty-six, correct?
Correct, that's correct.
Okay, and in in the new budget, I only see forty-seven forty-seven, forty-five?
Right, forty-seven, eighty-seven, forty-six.
I'm sorry, I
Was opened up for the tropical storm, which I'm in the process of closing, working with FEMA to finalize the very minute small details that they're asking us to do, and then that will be closed out.
So that's my general questions. The which ones are closed and which one is is open? Because I do see forty-seven, eighty-seven, forty-five stays open.
Yes, that's the pandemic. Yes.
Yeah, with just as a reminder, trustee de four, when we first established the eighty-seven, forty-five account, I believe that was in March or April of twenty-twenty. Then we reestablished it after the adoption of the nineteen-twenty budget with it to be funded from the surplus. So we didn't, we didn't include it as part of the original adopted budget because we just didn't know where we stood at that point. I think I would still recommend going that, you know, with that type of approach because we just don't know where we're going to stand with everything in a couple of months.
That that's my question. So we're not starting new here. We're only continuing this one. But it's going to stay at zero. If it's at zero, why do we spot it? Why does it say open? That's my question, really.
But one of the reasons we want to keep it in there, I assume, is because if we're still incurring expenses after June one that are reimbursable, we want to, you know, properly account for. I think we we may seek to ask the board for a supplemental appropriation from surplus to fund that line next year. But we're just, we don't know where we're going to stand at this point with what type of expenses we'll be incurring post-June one. You know, there there seems to be optimal general optimism at this point. And I'll just keep knocking on wood if that's the case. But I think we asked for, and the board approved, a four hundred thousand dollar supplemental in May or June last year. And I think we may even ask for an additional supplemental, but obviously, it's a, it's been a very interesting year in terms of trying to prepare for the pandemic and protect everyone.
So now you've heard my question. My question is, from what we've learned from eighty-seven, forty-five, eighty-seven, forty-six, do you expect some of those personnel, equipment lines to pop up fairly soon? And if so, how should we encounter that?
Not on forty-six, Victor. Forty-six, we will not incur any
Forty-six, fine, then forty-five?
Forty-five, potentially.
Personnel time, there's part-time, there's overtime, there's equipment.
Potentially. So we we do, we do what we can as far as cleaning of the offices and the hydrostatic cleaning during regular time, but at times we have to come in on Saturdays for to make sure that the staff isn't impacted by the hydrostatic cleaning. But there's some overtime incurred there. If there's a surge for some crazy reason, we would have to continue with the code enforcement, which was something that we paid out of overtime. We're still getting complaints that there are bars and restaurants that are staying open past eleven o'clock, which I think was ten o'clock prior. There's some costs that may come up after June first. I wouldn't expect too much, but it could potentially happen.
So this, in other words, this is a placekeeper to keep our options open.
Understand, but the question in terms of, you know, things staying open beyond where they're supposed to. Is this something that can be done by the police as opposed to bringing in a code enforcement officer on overtime?
Sure, there's something that could be done by police, but what we ended up doing was having a an actual planned unit come in to not just deal with one complaint, one location that receives many complaints. We were doing the entire village. And so I didn't expect that to happen again, but I was just using that as a demonstration.
No, I'm just, I was just curious. Okay, thank you.
Just I I can tell you that I know that the police have been told to look out for people staying open past eleven. There there are people who have been emailing about it a lot.
A lot.
You know, and and like, like always, it's, you know, a couple of habitual line steppers.
But I believe the major expenses and costs associated with eighty-seven, forty-five are over for us, and that's good. We got to get to again.
I'm gonna I'm gonna flip over to the the folks in the attendees and from the Budget Committee and see if either of them wish to ask a question. We have Ellen and Glenn and Bill on. Okay, Ellen, has her hand raised? Well, can you let Ellen in, please?
Hi, I was just gonna say no question since silence leaves you hanging, so.
Thank you, Ellen.
Right, and I thought it was a very clear presentation, so thank you for that.
Thank you very much, Ellen. Have a good evening.
You too.
I I do want to point out that, you know, we this is a recent creation, the HR Department. And I think it's been a success. I think Danielle is an exemplary employee and she's really turned things around. And I think it's to the benefit of our employees and it's to the benefit of the village as a whole. And I'm glad to see it happening.
Mayor, if I can use one example to demonstrate Danielle's commitment to this job, we have identified through our constant oversight of the documentation that we receive, many of our existing employees, employees that are employed by us full-time, work for us full-time, that submitted unemployment benefits. And it was all fraudulent. And we have a couple of detectives, police officer, office staff that have had their identity stolen. And we, Danielle identifies that and alerts the employee right away so that they can take action. It's been a tough, it's been a tough time for a lot of scammers. It's a great time for a lot of scammers, a tough time for, you know, decent law-abiding citizens, so.
And you know, I I come in on Saturdays a lot of time, half the time Danielle is in there working. Nothing else for tonight. This was rather easy and painless. We meet tomorrow night, same time.
You do have Glenn asking.
Oh, Glenn put his hand up?
Glenn and Gretchen. If you want to close it.
All right, let's go to Greta first.
Hi, this is Lynn Aubrey. I had to use that for the for the other meeting, a few, a few, a few of you were at the other day. So I have to figure out how to change it back to me. The right guy. How did you do it back? But but that that aside for the moment. First of all, thanks for the presentation, Dan and Jerry. The PowerPoint was clear, except the one thing. I think it said proposed for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, when we're really talking about twenty-one, twenty-two, at least as I understand it, so.
You're correct. We're talking about fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I mean, I've gotten used to the new years yet.
Yeah, and all the mistakes were made by Mr. Sonoff. Everything good about the presentation was nice.
But but that but that's just aside. I think I think it was Jerry, you talked about a significant increase in worker workers' comp expenses.
Yeah.
And and I thought you were going to say exactly why or maybe add some color to that. And then just related to that, I know Tom asked the question about training. And just in my own experience, there's been a fair amount of training done by by in other organizations I've worked at where helping people avoid accidents and training managers on how to manage workers' comp costs and so on has been a big deal. So those are just just a two-part question there, Jerry.
Sure. And I can I can answer both. So our workman's comp went up a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. And I can't exactly explain to you because I don't really know how the calculation is put forward, but I can tell you that, if you want, I can tell you that the the training that we do is through our insurance company, Forward and Sun. And in fact, tomorrow is our Safety Committee meeting. Our Safety Committee meeting meets quarterly to be able to identify areas where we can improve as well as look at certain repeat accidents that occur. But we have a fifty-one person police force. We have a large Public Works Department. We have a small Parks Department and a lot of the workman's comp claims come from those three departments.
Jerry, can I can I ask you, the DPW, the mechanics, the parks, people that work with machinery, are they required to take OSHA-ten?
Uh, no, we, I don't think they, I don't think that they are. I can ask that question tomorrow. It's never come up. There are several mandatory bloodborne pathogens. I've I've asked about lockout, tagout. I've asked about hazardous communication. So there are several that we're required to do that we do, but I don't recall ever talking about OSHA-ten.
You might want to ask the insurance guy, RJ, if taking OSHA-ten will have any impact on our rate.
Okay.
Hey, Tom, what is OSHA-ten?
OSHA-ten, OSHA is Occupational Safety Health Administration, the federal government.
Yeah.
And it's a course that they offer. You know, in my trade, you have to take it, right? I I took OSHA dirty. Really, it's ten hours of OSHA training. That's why it's OSHA-ten, right?
Okay.
And you you have to really sit in front of your computer, watch these videos, answer the questions afterwards. And you know, if if you can't skip ahead or anything like that, so you really have to do ten hours in front of your computer doing it. And you know, it's actually a lot of useful information and it's a lot of stuff that is helpful as a reminder to just about saying safe, about being in confined areas, about dealing with, you know, gashish environments, about dealing with electrical currents and how to stay safe. And you know, so you read through the material, then you answer the questions afterwards, you know, just like the standardized tests we took as kids. But it doesn't let you move ahead until you pass that unit's test. So you know, you you got to actually read it and pay attention.
I would say we probably have five hours early training per year, not necessarily ten. And the electric component would only be for a couple of employees, but I can ask about that to see if that's something that would help us with our rates. I know that the discussion I had a couple of months ago with RJ about front yard collection of trash cans would reduce our rates significantly. trash cans would reduce our rate significantly, but I'll ask about OSHA ten.
Thank you. Lynn, you have any other questions?
Question.
Thank you, Tom. No.
I'll wait till the attendees are finished. I'm sorry.
Who's got the hand up next?
I thought Glenn did or something.
Yeah, Glenn, Glenn's next. Good evening, Glenn.
Good afternoon. I'm out of the hospital and healthy. Much to your shoe grin.
Now, we're happy, healthy, Glenn.
We're back.
What's your question?
Uh, number one, just to talk about the unallotted insurance, I believe we actually went over the line this year, so you're not actually looking at an eighteen percent year to year increase. It's probably more like a ten percent increase because I believe we increased that line and the revive budget has it at a million thirty five. So it's not that we have an eighteen percent increase, it's an eighteen percent increase against the adopted budget, not the revised budget. Just so Kelly knows exactly why that increased so much. The second question I have is at the last meeting, Jerry mentioned about FEMA recoveries. We're gonna get approximately eight hundred thousand dollar recovery for storm and we're gonna get five hundred thousand recovery or whatever amount we spent on pandemic, we should get one hundred percent reimbursement, which is what I heard that Joe Biden promised Andrew Cuomo and Chuck Schumer. That line I don't have a problem with, but what I'd like to see is for the budget, add a revenue line and add pandemic recovery and add storm recovery. And you could put in what you think you're gonna recover, and then when it comes in, fill, fill it in. And then on the expense side, right now you have a hundred and thirty five, a hundred and thirty seven thousand or so in expenses. Well, that means our budget has something like six hundred thousand dollars worth of expenses that you recovered. Well, in order to better read the budget, whatever you recovered and it's gonna, from the recovery line, should actually be taken out of the departments and put into the expense line for the recovery. In other words, if you're recovering thirty seven thousand dollars in salaries from the park department, that thirty seven thousand dollars should be returned to the park department and then expensed under storm expense. That way you have a better reading of exactly what you're spending is this year or else you're skewed by six hundred thousand dollars worth of expenses that are being charged to departments that you're actually recovering from the storm, the storm damage. It doesn't change the total amount. All you're doing is you're taking the, whatever you, you, you applied for, whatever department you applied for, whether it's sanitation, whether it's parks, whether it's village manager's office, and you're going to apply those expenses to the expense line, storm expense line. Then you can restore that money to each department's budget so they know how much money they actually got to spend for the rest of the year.
Okay, we'll let the staff take that under advisement. Augie, you have something to say?
That was the whole point of setting up the eighty seven, forty five account. When the expenditure occurs, it's posted directly to eighty seven, forty five.
Okay.
Our manager thought of that already.
My guy.
It's debatable.
That's your wife's problem.
Oh, a question, Jerry, what surprised me when you did the recovery for the FEMA and COVID is that the fringe benefits are eighty one percent.
It was a surprise. I can tell you that.
And my question is, have we analyzed that and have we been able to give some thought as to how we can better control that? Because that seems way out of whack.
I have not analyzed that. In fact, I thought it was less than that until we did the calculation with the assistance of the clerk treasurer's office because FEMA requires us to do a calculation of fringe benefits according to their, according to their worksheet. It's a worksheet that they have.
Yeah.
I'm not looked, we have not looked at reducing medical costs. I am not sure if I can get into that project. We have not looked at, of course, we can't reduce pension. That's a fixed. We can't reduce payroll taxes or FICA. Group life insurance is a very small amount. Optical is a very small amount. But our medical insurance through the empire plan is five million eighty seven thousand, seven hundred and forty five dollars. And so if the reduction of medical expenses, which is a giant chunk of, of those fixed costs, it would be to go to an outside medical group and bid out the, the medical for the employees, which would have to be, according to our contracts, equal or if not better than the coverage that the empire plan currently provides. And so municipalities, Dan, have gone out and bid that out to try to get more competitive numbers.
I think it could be helpful if we could get a sheet that sort of identified or breaks the eighty one percent down.
I sent it in that email that Victor referenced, that we put up on the screen just a few minutes, but I'll resend that.
Okay.
Yeah, sure.
In terms of the medical insurance, and I'm not suggesting that we're not having the right insurance, but if we have aggressive insurance broker, have we talked with him about that? And for any ideas that he might, he or they might have?
I have not.
I think we, yeah, I think we've talked to RJ in the past about medical insurance.
I haven't.
Yeah, I don't think it's his forte. I think you, but we can certainly talk to him again.
Is, is medical insurance something that's a matter of collective bargaining?
Yeah. In fact, the percentage of the employee's contribution is also a negotiated item.
Are we in PERMA?
Yes. We're in PERMA for, for work comp, yeah.
I think when I was originally in the board, we were self self insured and that didn't work out.
Yeah, yeah, I think we've been with PERMA for, well, aside from a, a couple of years, we were, we, where we were with the New York State Insurance Fund. We've been with PERMA for the better part of two decades. But, you know, just, just to kind of take a step back to the fringe benefit policy, you know, we've, for several years, there've been, you know, declared disasters, you know, we calculate the fringe benefit rate. You know, FEMA has never you know, batted an eyelash at our, at our calculation, which leads me to believe it's pretty similar among most municipalities. In fact, it's probably greater, it's probably less than some municipalities and as you would say, across the river in Rockland County or Nassau County where you know, especially the police departments have fantastic contracts for their officers.
Let me, let me give an example. Dan, I currently contributed about two hundred and seventy dollars, two hundred and seventy five dollars per paycheck for my medical coverage. I have a family plan, myself, my wife and my son. And that's based on the latest CSEA contract. I think it's twenty five percent of the premium that I have to contribute. Our plan, our medical plan for a family is somewhere around, I don't know the exact number, but somewhere in the twenty five, twenty six thousand dollar range. I can tell you, I can tell you that in New Jersey, as a public employee, it was, when I left in two thousand and nineteen, it was thirty two thousand dollars for a family plan, for which at my salary level, I had to contribute thirty five percent of that number. So, and that was state law. Here, it's a negotiated item. And so what happens here is new employees pay for a certain period of time. In previous contracts, it was, it was basically allowed to sunset where some employees now are covered under our medical, medical expenses, but contribute nothing to it. They have passed their time for contributions. So the way contracts have been negotiated here in the past is that the medical contribution by the employee, which in my case is a normal thing that I've gotten used to for the past decade, goes away from many employees. Our long time employees do not have to pay for contributions to medical costs. And so as our employees continue to increase the number of years that, that they work here in the village, that number continues to go up because their contribution expires or sunsets. So that could be a contributor to our increasing fringe benefit cost. Less paid by the employee, more paid by the village of Mamaroneck.
That's something we would have to negotiate.
We negotiate it. It's in every negotiation session.
Gotcha. All righty. That being said, see you guys here tomorrow, same bat time, same bat channel. Need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Jerry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night, everyone.
Good night.